Welcome to the Monday, December 18th, meeting of the Board of Aldermen. The first order of business is minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You've got to be faster than...
[inaudible]
To the minutes?
Oh, not to the minutes, I'm sorry.
Very good.
[laughter]
One more time. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Next, we'll move to public comment. Any members of the public here who wish to address the Board on matters not on the agenda?
Yes.
All right, just step right up to the podium.
I have to stick out loud.
You do. And state your name and city or town of residence.
My name's Nicole Conway. I'm from Rutland City, Vermont here. I grew up here, so I'm kind of old school when it comes to here. I've been here three years. I'm from Stratton, Vermont. I've noticed now the town's gone downhill a little bit, so I've kind of noticed a lot of things around here. It's kind of depressed me a little bit to how things have changed since I was a little girl. But to start off, well, I go around picking up garbage. I love the area. Picking up garbage, needles, cart pipes, I pick up stuff. Doesn't matter what it is. I dump it in the garbage cans. No big deal. I love it. Makes me feel good. I live by Meadow Street, which the street park is beautiful. I remember when there was a park there, you know, where it used to have the pool and it used to be, you know, where you used to go there and have fun and, you know, it used to be a snack bar there back in the day. So I go there to clean my mind and stuff. So today, I found out there was a knife there today, okay? So I reported that 10 minutes. Within 10 minutes, cops came, which is great. They picked up the knife. It's great. I cleaned up the area from that area, so I knew it was different. But there's diapers, there's, you know, garbage, people dumping stuff there. Cleaned it all up. Got five bags of garbage one day in the area, got three bags of garbage the next day, two bags. So this time, I went up in a different neighborhood, up to the flats, which is right by the Amtrak. I cleaned that area. It's been picked up a couple of times, but there's a lot of cigarettes. So I think that it should be a cigarette stand right there for people to dispose their cigarettes. That way, the cigarettes won't be all around, they won't be trashing it, they'll use it if there's there. If something's there and a garbage can's there, they'll use it. If it's not there, they'll just trash the place. So that's a big thing for me when it comes to environmental safety, environmental health, and even with needles and everything else. I think when there's a garbage can, especially at Meadow Street Park, there's no garbage can anymore. They removed two garbage cans, and there's only one garbage can left. So that's a big thing. I don't understand why they're not there. They're not there. So there should be also a cigarette stand also by the garbage can in Meadow Street Park as well. Also, that's my one thing. Two, Brock. Brock employees refused me to give me food today. I went there, it's my third time this year. I went there for food. I'm once a month. I don't know what the policies are there. I don't know how many. You usually get four things here, four there. They used to actually give it to you. They actually went around the whole circle and asked you what you wanted. Now you can just help yourself to anything they want. First year when I went in there, they were like, "Oh, you can help yourself to anything, and you make as much as you want for bread, as much as you want for cucumbers," which is bullshit, because I would take the whole thing. If you want me to take the whole thing, then I'll take the whole thing, which is not right. It's for people that need it, which, of course, you know, fortunately, I'm fortunate. I don't need it. When I did, when I do. So that's the whole thing. Today was a big thing. They didn't offer. I was there last week. Yes, I got some food. And then I went there today to get some more food, and they didn't offer me a basket. I got a cart. They should have asked me and told me I got needed a basket, but out of 50 people, I've never seen anybody since I've been there with a basket. I've always seen everybody with a cart. I don't get a lot of money for food stamps, you know, I do have income. So, you know, 80 bucks is better than nothing. I'm happy with 80 bucks. Then, of course, I'm a student. I go to college. It went up a little bit. I'm done to college tomorrow with my business class. And anyway, story continues where this unprofessional person came up to me, which I applied to be a, I applied there to be a volunteer for their food shelf, because I'm in food business. I've been a chef for 25 years. I know about food. I know about regulations, health codes, which Stuart's, I had to say something about their health code because they had contamination in one of their freezers, so I called the health inspector. They took care of it. So there's one. Two, I, fortunately, Brock came up to me at the end when I was packing up my bags with my groceries, well, not groceries, I'm sorry, with the help of the people. Thank you very much. I also didn't want to go there. I'm very embarrassed. Do have to go there. And so anyways, I had my food at the end, and she came up to me, a woman, and she was a bigger lady, she was all gray, gray hair, trying to tell me that she was the one that took the application for the volunteering, which is not Amy Scott is, which I know Amy Scott very well since she was pregnant. She has a baby, and she's awesome. So this other woman, she's always gave me a hard time. So she came up to me and told me that I wasn't allowed to have the food I had. She told me I was supposed to have a basket. And I said, "Wow, you know, okay." Well, they didn't tell me that at the beginning. I had it, and I just went around the whole thing. And she told me that I was not qualified for the job because I didn't know what I was doing. Now, if I didn't know what I was doing, I was anybody, then anybody could be, she was supposed to train me and let me know, "Take two out of this, take one out of this, take four out of this, help yourself to this, take as many as this." Take as many as what? I mean, that's not right. You should be, there should be signs. There's no signs anywhere. I didn't know what was going on. It was my third time this year. I didn't know. Things change. They even had a sign that says, "It's not a shopping plaza here. Do not shop here," like going to the grocery store. Then she was telling me that I was robbing the place. I was robbing them. They said, then she told me if I was going to eat all that food all week. That's what she said to me. "Are you going to eat all that food? You have to put all that food, you're going to make me put all that food back?" She says to me. She says, "Take out everything, put it in a basket. Go get yourself a basket." I said, "Okay." So I got a milk, I got four items. She let me have four items. She goes, "That's enough, that's enough." She said, "Get us all you get." And she said, "Thanks a lot for letting me put back your food." So I left upset. Of course, I was pissed off. I couldn't believe, I couldn't have my food. I couldn't have anything. I was, you know, I had four items. She let me have four items. She said it was enough. Gave me, gave me a hard time, told me, embarrassed me in front of everybody. It was 50 people. I was the first one in. Embarrassed me in front of everybody. I was so embarrassed. I cried when I got home. I felt bad. So I called Tom Donahue, which is CEO from the Brock. His voicemail was full. It was 10:15 AM today. His extension's 123. His voicemail's full. But I did email him, and it went through wrong, because it was all lowercase, which is bullshit also, because it should be all capitalized. When you're talking to a person, you're talking to an upper-class person, it should be all capitalized.
I've got to intervene. One second.
So that's what happened.
Nicole?
Yep.
I've got to intervene.
That's what happened.
So this meeting is broadcast on television?
Oh, shit.
So, yeah, so when you say that...
On television?
Yep.
Oh, shit.
You can't keep using profanity.
I'm so sorry.
It can cause the network broadcasting it to be fine.
I did not know that. I'm so sorry. Apologize. Bless me, bless you guys. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Pray to God. I'm sorry, God. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. I'm on TV. Oh, my God. Okay. So anyway, that's what happened. And let's see here. So that's what happened, and I had to, so let's see here. So that's the way she treated me. So I thought I was unprofessional. I don't know what to do next. You know, also, there's no heat in our hotels. I went to bingo one night, and there's no heat. So if a pipe bursts and your heat goes into a cold system, and half the hotel's not heating, the pipes are burst, and the water will come out like a waterfall. And it would keep going to the next pipe, the next pipe, and the whole city's going to be flooded, because half of the Days Inn across the street is not heated as well. But half of Cortina Inn is not heated. It's all frozen, and it's cold. It's ice cold, including the bathrooms and half of that side when you walk into Cortina Inn, I went to bingo, it's right there. It's no heat at all. So if the pipes bust, and it gets condensation, and they heat up, you know, cracks, it's going to burst, and it's not, it's all going to be, it's going to be a mess in Rutland City, and the water is going to be all over, and we're going to flood out. And it's going to be one hotel to the next, to our homes, and it's just going to keep going. So I want to bring that up. And one more thing. The dogs inside our stores and our food stores, I don't like food. I mean, I like my food, and I used to not have the dogs. If there's dogs, I know there's blind people and dogs with emotional dogs and people with strollers in the stores and our grocery stores, but I really don't like to have pets inside our grocery stores. I think that should be our Walmart or anywhere. I think pets should be limited outside still. If a blind person needs to go shopping, it should be escorted, a person I can see, not our pets inside stores, to have our food and pet hairs all over our food. And that's, I'm not going to overwhelm with anything else, but, oh, one more thing. The Dollar Store is not a Dollar Store anymore. It's a $5 below store. With my sister Jen, she told me there is a store down south called a Five Below Store, and it's $3 and $5 in our Dollar Store now. It's not a $25 store. It's $3 and $5 store. Our Rutland people that don't have a lot of money go in there shopping like crazy, thinking it's $1.25. Some of them still think it's a dollar. And there's no signs, there's no nothing, there's no logos, there's no nothing. I did report it to one of the legal aides. They reported it to Attorney General's office as well, so they are taking, trying to take care of it, to find out and do investigation. But there is $3 and $5 items in our Dollar Tree store. And they don't know that in Rutland City. But I blogged it. I put on Facebook to make sure people knew. And people hacking into our gas stations. So don't put your card in any gas station. It was confirmed that they are hacking into our gas stations outside where you put the card in, and they're getting double charged. So do not, do not, and the whole wide world cannot use a gas station pump outside. They're hacking into it. And it was confirmed by a bank that told me about it. And it was confirmed by a girlfriend that had been doing it for years. So you have to go inside a gas station and pay for your gas from now on. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional members of the public here to address the Board on items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications from the mayor. Mayor Dungus?
Thank you. Good evening. So last Thursday, we completed the budget process. I want to thank everybody who was a part of that. It was a long fought process, and we got through it. And now that budget goes to the voters. Also, in the what we've done section, a couple weeks ago, I was able to attend the Stafford Regional Advisory Board meeting. It's interesting to hear the updates from Stafford and where they're at today. Being somebody who actually attended a program there back in the day, when recruitment to Stafford was something that they worked really, really hard on, as they still do today, but, you know, they couldn't fill the classes. Now, their challenges are that there's not enough room for the students that want to attend. And I think that's a fantastic thing. The programs that Stafford are running are very applicable to what we need in our community right now, and they're continuing to grow, and they're looking at what's next for them in the process. So you'll probably be hearing from them in the future about what their next steps are. One of the things that Stafford is doing with their construction program is they are looking for building lots. So started looking in the city, see what we have available that we may or may not need. That may come before the Board at some point as part of our city-owned properties process. Stafford may have some opportunities there like we've done for them in the past. But if you know of any lots that Stafford could build on, or anyone that's looking to get rid of their lots, please reach out to them and let them know. They would absolutely love to welcome a lot in Rutland City to build a nice new house on. Sadly, right now, they can't do renovations, by the way. It's just a liability thing, so it'd have to be a clean lot. Cedar held a couple of events this week, the Vermont Chamber Legislative, Vermont Chamber Legislative Breakfast, which was very informative, and they had their mixer at Heritage Family Credit Union, which is the big family. So for those who got to attend that, it was a good time. It was nice to see you there. We did Mondays with Mike, and we had a couple people stop by. This past week was at Speakeasy. Our next one will be on January 8th, and that location will be announced. So what we're doing today, myself, the Chief of Police, Commander Proudey, went up to Waterbury, and the Governor had a public safety meeting. People from all sorts of communities were there to listen to panels, have a discussion, different panels having different discussions from different perspectives, right? Leaders from the state, those people who are out in the field, seeing the challenges that we're dealing with every day. It was a great conversation. It was cut short due to the rising water levels in the river, so we had to leave right before we got to the judicial section of the conversation. However, I did have the opportunity to talk to Judge Zone, who's in charge of scheduling judges and placing appointments and staffing our courts. And I do have some good news, right? We've been talking for months on end about making sure that Rutland is fully staffed in the judgeship so we can get through this backlog of cases. We now, starting in January or sometime shortly, shortly sooner, will have full, three full-time judges here in Rutland, which is fantastic. So one will cover civil, one will cover criminal, one will cover family, and then we have two or three backup judges. If you look at the list, we actually have backup judges and additional judges that'll be helping us take care of court cases here in Rutland. The other thing that I want to say is I did happen to have a conversation with a few other people, and it does look like our caseload is down from the 1,800 that we've been at to about 1,600 cases. So we've been clear, you know, clearing out, pushing through these cases, which is great. We're starting to see some headway here. I know it's a small piece of news, but it's good news. We've made a lot of effort, had a lot of communication. Even things like this meeting the Governor's holding are because our community is speaking out, and they want to be heard, and it's being heard by mob healers. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's pitched in to do that. On another front, we did locally, and what we're doing locally, we've been looking at reported concern. We've been doing the review every two weeks. It's been great. We're closing out tickets that are completed, things that have been referred to different departments. We're reassigning things to departments. We appreciate those citizens who continue to use that app. If we don't have an answer for you right away, we have a new way to communicate that to you. We're going to send you a message and say, "We're going to put it in the pending project state." And then that project, as it gets addressed. So if we're planning on doing a sidewalk, and you've reported a sidewalk issue, we'll put that in the pending project state. And then in the future, when that happens, you'll get an update that we're working on it. But the idea being that that's a two-way communication tool with the public, and that's going quite well. In front of you, on your desks, you have a letter of intent for 10 Cleveland Avenue. So this is the Linda Lee property. This is something that we've been working on through the TIF process for a significant amount of time. This letter of intent is to show that the city is intending to look at the property as a potential asset that we would like to take over for the purposes of a TIF district at some point. The idea behind this is that in order to understand whether or not we actually want to do that, we need site control. There are some additional studies that need to be done, some more cleanup information that needs to be gathered. And this LOI asks the property owner to hold that property for 60 days while we enroll the property in some of those studies and take a look at what needs to be done with it. What I'm asking for tonight is your authorization as a Board for me to sign this LOI. This is a non-binding agreement. If we choose not to move forward, we don't have to move forward. This does not lock us into purchasing the property. This is just for us to say, "We're interested in purchasing it, and we'd like you to not sell it in the meantime over those, over those 60 days once we sign." I'd also like, in conjunction with this, the discussion to go to committee. Community Economic Development probably be the best spot, to see, as we get the data, to give the Community Economic Development Committee an update on what's going on, to see if we want to proceed down the line. So that would be two different motions, if you so choose.
Alderwoman Toddio, and then Alderwoman Davis.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent for the purchase and sale of 10 Cleveland Avenue.
Second.
So we have a motion, and it has been seconded, to authorize the mayor to sign. Alderwoman Davis?
So what, what is this going to tie us to? Because there's taxes, there are all kinds of things that are connected to this property.
Sure. So if you look at the letter of intent, it does talk about what we would like the purchase and sale agreement to look like if we moved ahead, right? So that we would purchase the property for a dollar from the owner. The taxes would be, I think though, there's proper, they're forgiven. I want to use the proper terminology, which is, you know, the property does have value, so there's, you know, there is a trade there. And then the process there is there are a couple of liens on the property right now. The state has actually called me and said, "Hey, some of our liens are connected to the health and welfare of that site. If the city were to actually want to move forward with that, we would work to clear all those things up, because we want to see the betterment of this property."
But what liability do we assume by this?
So part of this process would be to look at enrolling in the Brello program, which would mean that we would, we would not have any liability that was carried over if we were able to get that approval from the state.
And so at one point, if I may, Mr. Chair, so at one point, there is no guarantee that this will become a TIF district, right? So, but at one point, I think might in Birch might be helpful to have them come to the chartering order, I'm sorry, Community Development Committee, to talk to the Board about this.
I think that's a perfect idea, and that's something that we discussed with them specifically in relation to this, so.
Alderman McCann, and then Alderman Gillum.
Can you remind me where we are with the recent sort of environmental analysis we have for the asbestos and things like that?
Sure. So we, the environmental analysis that we went forward with was specifically for the asbestos. We asked for a study that was beyond what had been done in the past. So deeper dive into what asbestos is in the roof, what's in the structure, what's in the floors, what's in the walls. We know that the tiles have asbestos in them. That has been done historically. That process is done. We're getting our presentation, we're not, we're getting our data on the 21st with a quick meeting, and then I'm going to bring that forward to the Board, hopefully with the engineer, for a presentation to come forward when they're done. But they, they have a couple of questions for us, and we'll go back and dig into those, and then they'll have the final piece done. So their draft will be to me on the 21st. You're welcome. Took a little longer than we expected, just.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes. I'm on the advisory, the TIF committee, and we've been working on this to get Mr. Regorio to the table, and this document brings him to the table, because we need to get some controls so we can understand what's happening on the property. This gives us some access to the property to gather more information. It does not tie us to a sale price yet. It does not tie us to an agreement yet of purchasing. It does have us to that direction. Also gives us time to put information together for the TIF bond if we decide to go forward with that, which I'm hoping we do, because the neighborhood really would like to see this property dealt with, one way or another. It's very important that you vote for this tonight so we can get access to the property to finish the information process that we need, so we can put a TIF bond together. But we can't do that until we get the information first. So this gets us into the door and get the information together. So I really would like you to approve this tonight, because I know the neighbors are very, very excited to see this starting to move forward. It's been sitting there way too long, doing nothing. This is something.
Alderwoman McClure, and then Alderwoman Davis.
I had a question, and Alderman Gillum's statement answered that, so.
Alderwoman Davis?
So just, just so we're clear, the district has not been, there's been a decision to make this a TIF district, right?
No, it'll come before the Board.
Comes to the, it comes to us.
Right. But, but it still has to be approved.
Mm-hmm.
Us, blah, 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 in my pulley.
Yep.
Okay. So do we feel that that's a process that will be positive with the TIF district?
Yeah. So this is, you know, these are kind of some of the things that TIF districts are designed to do, is to take public infrastructure. So if we, so part of the, if you, if you roll this out, why does the city need to take this building over? Well, no one's done anything with it, right? It's sitting there. So what a TIF would allow us to do is we could use TIF dollars from a future project to actually repair this site. We could use the TIF money to clean the site up and get it ready for a developer, and then get it into a developer's hands. So what that in turn does is allows us to have a developable product, please, geez, sorry, developable location, that's the word I was looking for, based on a site that's currently blighted and falling apart.
So what, if any liability occurs to the taxpayer?
Yeah. So the liability, let's talk about that. So earlier, you asked me what the liability was to the city. From an environmental standpoint, the processes that we're taking and the steps that we're going through protect us from a liability, from an environmental standpoint, right? So for both the cleanup of the asbestos and the cleanup of the, the cleanup of any petroleum issues. And there's a few, but it's small. It's not, it's not big in that site. So that we would be protected there. The liability to the taxpayer is that of any property that the city owns, right? So when we take over city-owned properties and tax sales, we would have those liabilities as well. We have to make sure that people stayed off the property during construction. There are things that, that would happen, just like we do when we take over a city-owned property. We have to board up the house, make sure it's locked, or, you know, someone's living in there. We have to take care of that property. So it wouldn't be completely nonexistent, but the idea would be that we would have a very focused plan to remediate the issues on that property almost immediately after taking possession of it when we do that.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes. I don't think a lot of people in the city understand what the building sitting there right now, this is a major risk right now, as it's sitting there now. If that wall caved in onto Cleveland Avenue with the dead end, that whole neighborhood would lose the power lines that bring the juice to that neighborhood, number one. Number two, it puts our firefighters at risk. Now, there's an order that we are not to go into the building. They have to fight the fire from the outside, because it's very dangerous to send our guys in there. And number three, we still have squatters in there that we keep pushing out of there. So sitting and doing nothing is not the answer here. We need to move forward. We need to put a plan together. We need to put a tax district together and clean that neighborhood up once and for all. I mean, this is the only shot we got. And if we can get him to, get him to sign this document, which we have done, we need to sign it so we can move forward.
Great. Alderwoman Hooker and then Alderman Kupaly.
Just a quick question on who would be doing the assessment?
The, the assessment?
Of the property?
The environmental assessment?
The environmental.
So the, the investment, assessment that's been done so far for the asbestos has been done by a company called Claypoint. Um, the, the redo of the phase one and phase two is to be determined. We'd have to see. There's some data already that we can use, but we have to do some others.
Alderman Kupaly?
Is it right to ask what the current tax liability is on the property?
Yes, absolutely. It is in your documents. Um, hold on, let me just pull it up.
On the last page.
So it's $126,516.12.
So those are, if I may, those are dollars that the city has not collected.
That's correct.
And we will not collect any more tax monies from that property if we take it.
We have not been able to collect tax money on that property for some time. We would stop collecting taxes when we took it over, but the idea would be for it to be a developable, developable site with investment and growth, which would then we would collect tax on moving forward.
When we, if we are to sign that, uh, letter of intent, do we add that property to our liability insurance? Are we to disbury it or, um, how is that?
If we, the city were to go on, onsite and do work, I would say that's probably a smart idea just to be safe, but the, we would have consultants on that property. And this is just site control. We will not be owning this property. We will not be renting it. We do not have rights to use it for something. This is site control so that we can begin those surveys and studies.
And then, um, my other question was, given that six days, do you anticipate any other additional cost? Um, I know there's been studies, so those are all done, but what other costs are going to be already coming out of the TIF money? How are we going to pay for that?
Sure. Ed, would you mind helping me out with what would be done on that site after, during those six days? Do you want to come up here?
This is where he's at.
So the, um, there's two pieces to the environmental assessment work that need to happen. There's the asbestos piece, which the report is forthcoming.
Yep.
Which we can then see what's there. So nothing more on that. The other piece is actually called the brownfields piece and it's actually separate from asbestos. And that's really what's in the ground under the building. We've done a phase one, a phase two, a supplemental phase two assessment on that. And now we're actually ready to put together a corrective action plan, which is like the last step in the brownfields assessment piece. The corrective action plan will tie back together the asbestos piece, get cleanup costs, and then if there is some type of redevelopment proposal, it would talk about some of the options you have with remediation because sometimes it's better to leave some things there and put buildings in certain spots. So for the asbestos piece, or the, um, excuse me, the assessment piece, there's not a lot left on that. So what that'll give you then is a property where you know what's in the ground. Through this, you'll have the insurance program, which is the Brela piece, which basically says if you have that and the city were to take it over, the city wouldn't be liable for anything else they discover there, brownfields related. I don't know if that would have to do with the other insurance program. And regardless if there's a TIF or not, if there's, say there isn't a TIF for a little bit, being in the Brela program opens us up to some cleanup funding for the site that we can actually do the remediation and get the site clean and ready to go. If there's the TIF piece to it, we can do the remediation with TIF, but also TIF allows us to take the building down, have site control, and get it to the state where then it could possibly go back to a developer. And that's where that sale price hopefully would be more than the taxes that are in the city if you, if you're providing something to, um, back to the market. So TIF or not, the, the first thing really, which is great, is to get it out of the current site owner's hands. And then if we can finish the assessment work, which is almost done, that will give this board enough to work on when it goes to committee what they want to do, what you want to do with the property.
Okay. Thanks. So as Alderman Gillum stated, this is just the first step, right? We have a couple of times that we can say, you know what, after these assessments come back, if Brela comes back and says, you know, we're not, we're not going to allow it to enroll in the Brela program, we have opportunities to say, you know what, maybe this isn't what the city needs to be doing right now. We want to constantly assess that risk as we move forward. But, um, kind of to the point that Alderman Gillum was making, this has been a blight in our community for some time. It is currently a relatively low risk to the city to do it this way, especially with the LOI and the way that it's written. So I think just to move forward and then have that in community, talk to White and Burke, have those conversations, and look at what we get from the Brela system. I think that's a good process forward.
So Alderman Gillum, Alderman Kupaly, and then...
Permission to speak for the third time?
It's fine.
If people want to know how this TIF thing actually works, I would suggest they get in their car and go to St. Olmstead and look at the downtown project that was just completed about eight years ago. They took a whole citywide block and built almost a hundred million dollar tax base with a downtown hotel, parking garage, the whole nine yards, upstairs apartments, retail on the bottom floor, downtown White River with another project that was done there too. This is a good project for us to look at and proceed to it. Doesn't say we need to approve it, but we need to go through the steps to get there. So we have something to present to the taxpayers, an actual plan to correct the blight properties in this community. This is an opportunity. This is not a bad thing.
Alderman Kupaly?
Do we know if the current owner has applied for cleanup or state funding?
I am not aware. Do you know? No, I don't. No, is the answer no?
No, because they haven't finished the corrective action.
Right.
Which would tell them how much you need to apply for.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor. Alderman Barber-Gallagher.
Uh, one question. The brownfield study that would be conducted, would that be just on the property or would it extend across the street to the, I know it is a former CVPS property, I don't know who owns it now, because there's a possibility that that could be a brownfield site also.
I believe that it's for the property itself, but I'll talk to Ed about it as we move forward.
It's just for that property.
Just for that property. Okay, thank you.
And the other site with the solar array on it that has had brownfields assessment before.
So we have a motion on the floor to authorize the mayor to sign the LOI for 10 Cleveland Avenue. It has been seconded. Any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vaye.
Motion passes. Alderwoman Toddio?
I would also like to make a motion to refer discussion of 10 Cleveland Avenue to Community and Economic Development.
All right. So we have a motion to refer discussion of 10 Cleveland Avenue to Community and Economic Development Committee. It has been seconded. Alderman Gillum?
I would caution when we bring these people in to do it by Zoom so we're not paying the hourly rate for them to drive down here. That would save the city some money.
You're, you're referring to White and Burke, our consultants on the TIF. Yes, very good.
Might be money well spent.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor of the referral?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I would also, in the additions and deletions to the agenda, I'd like to add a brief, brief executive session at the end to discuss a contract with the PD.
It's all moved.
Second.
Well, we got to get to additions and deletions first. I got a bunch of them.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's one of many.
Just throwing that on your list, thank you. All right. Um, so that was, uh, what we're doing, what we will be doing. I just, uh, you know, we talked about the TIF districts, so we're continuing down that process. It's starting to pick up pace. White and Burke, our consultant, is actually pretty enthusiastic, but warns it's going to be a lot of work moving forward. So, uh, we're moving, we're moving along with that. We're doing HR directors and assistant zoning administrator interviews this coming week, which is great. We have the homeless transitional housing meeting planned for the end of this week. That's the, to start on the housing side. Remember a few weeks ago I talked about the services side? We're going to talk with the housing funders in the state of Vermont to talk to them about the housing side, working with housing trusts to start to put that package together. So that's going to happen this week. And then I do want to say happy holidays, merry Christmas, and happy new year to everybody before I go into this next part. So just, because this next part I'll, I'll be done when we're here, but happy holidays, merry Christmas, happy new year. We'll see you on the eighth after this. So, uh, this next part is brief, but it's, it's important. So the, let me see, I want to make sure I have this right. So our water department for the city, um, every quarter has to do some testing. And during that testing process, uh, over the last three quarters, they have seen an elevated level of something called, let me make sure I get this, uh, haloacetic acid. Uh, there are five types that they measure for in the water. These haloacetic acids are, they show up when something called disinfection byproduct, and they are a disinfection byproduct, uh, is tested for in the water. So disinfection byproduct, sounds like a very complicated technical word. Essentially what we do is our water comes from the Mendon Brook, comes down into our reservoir, we run it through our sand filters, which by the way are some of the coolest things you've ever seen, really simple gravity-fed technology, awesome stuff. And then after it comes out of the sand filters and starts heading down to our, our tank reservoirs, we add, uh, we chlorinate the water. So sometimes you can smell the chlorine in the water, sometimes you can't, just depends on the temperature and whatnot. But when we chlorinate that water, what that's doing is that's eliminating biologics, right? Biologics can be anything from bacteria and chloroform, which you don't want in your water, um, to things like the biodegradable pieces of leaves and milfoil that we find in our reservoir or in the streams. When we see this disinfection byproduct number, what it does is it tells us that there are more biologics in the water than normal, right? So as that number goes up, so are the biologics going up. We're not adding any more chlorine, we're not doing anything else, we always disinfect at the same rate, but those byproducts are increasing and this, uh, United States and the state of Vermont keep an eye on that. Now, the number of those byproducts that we're supposed to be under is 60 parts per billion. So if you think about a billion, right, 60 parts per billion, I have a little note here from our, uh, staff. Um, one part per billion is the width of one human hair over a 68 mile distance, right? So 60 parts per billion is 60 human hairs from 68 miles away, right? Same thing goes with, uh, it's one second over a 32-year period is a part per billion. So we have tipped the scale by point five on our parts per billion. So we've gone from, we're supposed to be under six zero and we are at six zero point five. So on the 29th, when you get your next water bill, you're going to get a letter that essentially explains that we're over here and what we need to do as a city to take corrective action. So historically, we've actually tipped this scale before and we've sent out these warning letters before. We've even put plans in place to remediate this problem. But every time we have to put plans in place, we notice those numbers drop. Sometimes it's because, uh, we got too much rain in the summer and then, just like we did this summer, and all of a sudden now we don't have that same problem anymore. Uh, once was because Irene cleaned out the system and washed away a lot of the biologics, right? So we've had plans and the last plan that was filed, I believe was 2011 and expired in 2013, and we haven't had to address it since then. But now we're going to have to again. So what our process is moving forward, just so people are aware, is we're going to be working with the state. We're going to be coming up with a plan. There's a couple of different ways we can do it. We can run through certain types of filters, we can add additional product, which we would probably not want to do, but maybe an option. There's a couple of different things that we can look at. I think the most important thing for people to know right now is that there are no short-term issues with this, right? This is a, if there, this is monitored because of long-term exposure, not short-term exposure. So long-term exposure, just to give you a fact, oh, if you drank three liters of water a day at this level for 10 years straight, every day, you would increase your chances of cancer one out of every 60,000, right? So that's at the 10-year mark, not any time in between. That's the science behind this. There are no short-term side effects to this, according to the government. They just, it's something we have to be aware of and keep our eye on. As you get these letters, please be aware that you can absolutely call the Department of Public Works for more information. The phone number is 802-773-1800. I'm sure Peg TV will put it on the bottom of the screen as I'm getting a nod. You can reach out to the Department of Public Works, they'll be happy to answer your questions. We'll be posting an update about this on the city website. And just know that this is something we're aware of, we've dealt with it in the past, and we'll be addressing it as we move forward. Are there any questions on that? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
All right. Moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda. So we have first the addition of setting the water and sewer rates, and I'd like to move that to the beginning of reports from department heads.
It's all moved.
Second.
Uh, we also have a request to go out to bid for city and RRA audit services, a request from Treasurer Markowski. We have the mayor's brief executive session to discuss a contract with PD. And then I'd like to move petitions, letters, and miscellaneous up before reports and letters from department heads so the gentleman who's joined us from the Comfort Inn doesn't have to stay for the duration. The board is okay with those additions?
It's all moved.
Second.
Alderman McCann?
Can I also add an information-only update for the traffic committee?
Yes.
It's all moved.
All right. So there was a motion and a second to make these additions and deletions to the agenda. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So we'll move to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communications, and I'd like to welcome the new owner of Comfort Inn to speak to us. You step right up. Welcome.
Thanks, thanks for having me. Um, so I was called up just to, I guess, answer a couple of questions about the business application that we put in for the property.
Do any members of the board have questions?
Well, I guess...
Alderwoman Davis?
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Appreciate it.
Um, I guess my one question is, I'm sure that you're aware that some of our hotels are contracting with the state, and that's a hard trick for the city. We lose revenue, et cetera. Is there any plan for, for the, um, the Comfort Inn to do the same?
Yeah, there's no plan. Currently, the hotel does not take any of the voucher business. It's all leisure and we're going to keep it that way.
Thank you.
Good. Mayor Duncess?
Sorry.
Alderman Gillum, you can go first, I didn't see your hand.
Um, yes, um, thank you very much. Welcome. I used to be in that neighborhood for a long time and, uh, know what kind of business could be there. And I want you to understand that we will support you if you continue to be a hospitality business and, you know, folks coming and going.
Yep.
And stay away from the voucher thing, you'll be in good shape.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mayor Duncess?
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for investing in the business. We appreciate the fact of being aware of the situation. Uh, one of the questions that we have, so, uh, within the city, we've had a couple of issues over the past few months where city residents whose houses have burned down or they haven't afforded their home and they need a place to stay, they've been challenged to find, right, because quality and, and some of these hotels are full. Um, when they come to the Comfort Inn in the past, uh, because they have a rotten address on their license, they've been tried to write because of fear that they'll become a voucher, uh, program type of recipient. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us to work together for those that are in the city where the city's discretion can help you sit through that and, and we can find some emergency housing for people who are going to need it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely open to that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Any additional questions or comments from members of the board? Alderman McCann?
I guess, do you have any sort of aspirations or plans or, you know, anything in the works that would be going along with being a new owner of the business in town?
Yeah, so we, I spoke to some contractors today and, uh, we're definitely updating, modernizing the property. So the, the entire exterior is going to be done in April.
Cool.
And then we have more things to come on the inside.
Nice. Exciting. Excellent news. Thank you. Alderwoman McClure?
Um, I was just wondering, as far as I'm aware, the Comfort Inn property has a pool, correct?
It does have a pool, yeah.
Will that pool be open for city residents or non-city residents to be able to come in and use, um, for, for a fee? That used to be something historically that hospitality locations in the city have done in the past. And I was just wondering if that was something that you would be looking into offering for city residents or, again, non-city residents as well?
Right. So, uh, we actually haven't closed on the property yet, that's going to be next month. But, um, if that's okay with the franchise, then I don't see a problem with it, but that's not something I, I thought about yet.
Totally understandable.
Yeah.
Seeing nothing further, thank you. Thank you for joining us.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, and we'll begin with the setting of the water and sewer rates.
I'm not going to suspend rules because this was in committee, so I'm bringing this out of committee. We did talk about it on the seventh for a short period. The reason why we did not bring it out of committee because the numbers were changing and as the budget was going through the process, the numbers continued to change. And so now we have the numbers that are accurate here. And we'll leave one, read one paragraph from the superintendent of Public Works. The imposed increases to the water sewer treatment and sewer maintenance rates are a result of multiple events. First, increased the inflation, and it was caused by the cost of materials, parts, labor, fuel, chemicals have risen on unexpected levels. The increase also includes the COLA due to the union contracts and it will go to a flat rate of point seven three per hour. Averaging, the average approximately three percent increase, five percent increase to Y fi, Y fiscal year 23 was three point five, um, and the fiscal, actually three point five for fiscal 24. The contract takes effect, um, these new rates take effect, uh, January, uh, Ju, July 1st, 2024. So the current rate is two point six nine three, the proposed rate for, is three point zero three nine. And I move that we raise that rate to three zero three nine. So moved.
Second.
All right.
That's for the water.
Alderwoman Davis?
Okay. So I think there's just one mistake. These do not take effect July 1st, they take effect November, correct?
That's correct.
That's where the bills come out.
The billing cycle starts is July 1st.
Right. The billing cycle to July... But the bills will go out, but for the first November bill, you'll, they'll see the increase.
They'll do November 1st.
Correct. Okay. They'll see the increase of that. And I think it should state, and Gail, please correct me, it says, uh, total quarterly rate change impact on smaller family, 1,200 cubic foot is up eleven dollars and forty-four cents a quarter, and the rate for a larger family of 2,400 cubic feet is twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents a quarter.
That's correct. For water and sewer.
Water and sewer.
Thank you.
But we're just setting the water rate currently.
We're just setting the water. So if you want to, if you want to know the breakdown, the, uh, the family, a small family So if you want to, if you want to know the breakdown, the family, a small family of two would be $4.15, and then for a family of four, 2,400 cubic feet would be $8.31 per quarter. That's for the water only.
Right.
So we're voting on the water rate now.
So we have a motion to approve the water rate, as read by Alderman Gillum. It's been seconded, any additional discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to move the sewer treatment rate to 5.876. Nice, so moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to set the wastewater treatment rate at 5.876. It has been seconded, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then move the sewer collection rate to 1.996.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to set the wastewater collection rate at 1.996. It has been seconded, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I should probably just tell the public what the other rates are. Rutland Town pays one and a third rate more than we do on the Alpine Pipeline, and the Reddick, which is the airport, and those rates are up a little also. So everybody's paying their fair share outside of the city to all these, the collection and the sewer system. So it's not just the city paying for the water here in the sewer, it's also people from out of town.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Next, we have Barbara Spalding from the Rutland Redevelopment Authority with two recommendations for approval of business incentive and assistance programs for forgivable loans. For the first, there's a memo and a copy of the loan application on pages one to five of your packet. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, you all look great in your sweaters. Elizabeth De Palma is applying for a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan as the new owner of Avanti Unisex Hair Salon at 52 Center Street. As an existing business, the application meets the buy-up criteria through expansion. Elizabeth has purchased the business and is planning renovations of $14,000 to allow her to hire two to four new stylists. Avanti has been a downtown staple for 30 years, and this investment will sustain the current clientele while also creating opportunities for new customers. The RRA Board renewed, reviewed the application and recommend approval of the loan, and Elizabeth is here if you have any questions.
Hi.
So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Tadio?
I will move to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to Avanti Unisex Hair Salon.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded, and if you wanted to say anything? Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Alderwoman McClure?
So I have seen, and I've heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was there a tattoo artist who was practicing in your shop for a period of time as well?
There was, he actually just left us.
Got it.
Yeah, this month.
Got it.
It was on Space.
Is that the space that's like next door with like the road?
He's two doors down where Lowe was.
Got it, okay. I was wondering if that was, if his expansion would be part of your project?
Unfortunately, not, not just us.
Got it. Congratulations still.
Thank you.
Never forget seeing everything that you do.
Thank you.
Alderman McCann?
This is great, super excited for you. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about sort of why you would choose to stay in downtown Rutland and expand and invest in our downtown as opposed to, you know, moving somewhere else?
So I've been a cosmetologist for 17 years, most of my time at Avanti. Kim has been the owner, one and only owner. She's about 65 now and is ready to be done. She asked me about two years if I wanted to take over. I feel like our salon is very busy almost all the time, so we're very successful, and as still kind of a young stylist, I would like to continue to improve that, so.
Seeing nothing further, I'll note that Alderwoman Hooker is going to abstain from voting as she's related to the applicant.
Oh, yeah.
So we have a motion to approve, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And for the second, there's a memo and a copy of the loan application on pages six to nine of your packet.
So Anna, whose last name I can't pronounce, is applying for a $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan to assist in the purchase and renovation of 24 Whale Street, the former Domino's, for Anna's Empanadas. She will be making food there for deliveries in wholesale and hopes to eventually have retail space at the location as well. The new business meets the criteria of the buy-up through personal financial investment of over $90,000, and the RRA Board has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the loan. Anna is here to answer any questions that you might have.
So I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
So motion to suspend the rules has been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Tadio?
I will move to approve the $10,000 buy-up forgivable loan for Anna's Empanadas LLC.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve the forgivable loan, it has been seconded. Any questions for the applicant? Alderman McCann?
I'll ask the same question to you. Can you, you know, this is great and exciting, and I'm looking forward to seeing your business there, but could you talk a bit about why you would choose to invest in downtown Rutland?
First of all, I think, I believe in Rutland. I've been having the business for 16 years, it's been great to me and my kids. I sent one of my kids to college because of that. I'm a school teacher too, I mean, you had to have like three or four jobs. But this is a great opportunity to build Rutland again. I want good food, I want the kids actually eat local, for, have a good meals, no like chain that is no good for them. And also I want to, you know, build some jobs. I mean, I need help. You know, I have my bakery in my house for like, from 2015, and it's time to, you know, move out, and then, and I believe in my business, and I think I can make a big improvement in Rutland.
Alderwoman McClure?
Thank you. Thank you for your investment in the community, both with your business and through your day job as a school teacher as well. I don't know if you remember me, Anna, but you actually taught my youngest brother Spanish, my youngest brother, my youngest foster brother, so you've always been an amazing person.
Thank you.
Always been amazing at what you do. My question for you, I see here you are looking to take over the old Domino's, is your plan to purchase the entire building as well as the upstairs office space that remains vacant, or are you just looking for that Domino's space?
No, only the Dominique space, yeah, Dominique.
And then I have a secondary question. As Domino's existed in its prior life there, it tended to be a very popular spot for the late night evening crowd of downtown to grab a bite to eat before heading home in the wee hours of the morning, 2:00 AM or so. I was, I was wondering if you would be interested or looking forward to doing a takeout window in the late evening to kind of bridge that gap of food in the late night in downtown Rutland?
Actually, first I want the business to start slow to have my factory there, I have a couple of accounts in Woodstock and Killington, and then after it's top-notch, I will open to public for sure, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further questions, all those in favor of approving the forgivable loan?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Next up is Recreation Superintendent Peters with a request for approval to apply for the recreational trails program grant for Pine Hill Park. There's a memo, it was in your packet on page 10, but I believe she's, no, it's on page 10 of your packet.
Yep.
And there was an email with a map.
With a map, yep. So this is a request for the City of Rutland, specifically Recreation, to apply for the RTP grant with support and collaboration with Pine Hill Partnership. I've actually done two of these grants when I was in Killington, they're, they're good grants. It's a $50,000 ask with 20% of in-kind that, that the Recreation Department would provide along with volunteers from Pine Hill Partnership, and any additional cost would come from Pine Hill Partnership. I'll let Shelley just talk about it, we're really excited because it is a universal trail to allow fishing, and she's done, as you well know, a lot of work. Her and Tyler met this morning with some outside people too, and, and we're really excited about the beginning of this specific trail. So I'll let her talk just really briefly about the universal trail and any questions you might have.
Hi, I'm Shelley, I live in Clarendon and do a lot of the volunteer work in Pine Hill Park, along with, you met a couple of the younger people that helped me. But this universal trail is going to be accessible, I'm not going to say ADA compliant yet because we're waiting for the design to come back from timber and stone, which I'm hoping to have this week. And it, it's probably going to be in two phases, and phase one would be from the lower parking lot out along East Creek, out to the northeast corner, heading towards the country club. And with Fish and Wildlife today, we met with an idea of where we could put it, an accessible fishing platform in closer to the two parking lots. So this is all just kind of, it's all just kind of burbling right now. So the plans are out there, we're working with Otter Creek Engineering because we know we're probably going to need wetland permits along with a host of, I'm not sure what else is out there, what I'm afraid of. And then phase two, which is going to be probably a couple of years from now, would be taking the Lower Giorgietti Trail, which is existing, and making that universally accessible, and it would connect into the trail out by the Chimney Swift Tower, which is out by the old softball field if anybody remembers that. So that's it, that's short, it's concise, I think. Questions?
Alderwoman Tadio?
Shelley, thank you for the work that you do for our community, I really appreciate it. And I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I would like to make a motion to authorize the REC Department to apply for the recreational trails program grant.
Second.
All right, motion has been seconded, Alderman McClure?
I just had a question for you, Shelley, here. I see that there is plans for the trail to go along the side of the East Creek. In this, in the plans that will be coming forward, will there be flood mitigation plans kind of built into that after?
Oh, the state will make sure of that.
Okay, awesome. I just know after, after the year we've had, anything being close to water makes me anxious.
Totally agree. And this is not a given, you folks, all right? This is not a given, because like I said, we're in the design phase right now, and there may be too many hurdles that it might, it's a great idea, but maybe it's too many hurdles that we really want to jump through. So then maybe we shift our focus, so. Because the RTP grant is good for also trail remediation, which we can shift our focus to that because we still have plenty of trails that need trail remediation just from the use that the park is seeing, so. Answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman McCann?
It looks like at least a portion of the trail would be built as a boardwalk, do you ever thought of what the remainder would be? Would it be asphalt, concrete, soccer pad?
Oh, no, not asphalt, not asphalt. It'll be probably three, like a three-eighths minus topping, so there's layers of different sized stone that gets laid down, and then the final layer is like a three-eighths minus. And if you've been to the front entrance of the park, we have some right at the very front entrance going up to the kiosk, and it's really durable, and it's not impervious, so.
Great.
I'm learning a few terms that I didn't know up until a couple of months ago. Any other questions?
Oh, I think you've covered it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just to that point, there's also a new tool, I was actually talking to Ed about this the other day, called Permit Navigator, that is required for these permits. I had got to do one during the Vorax, so it goes through all of those types of things, impervious, and then it tells you which permit you need to get. But, but to Shelley's point, this is, this is definitely a dream of ours, we've talked about, and the opportunity has started to come, and so we, we do hope, but if this piece doesn't work, we have another option to continue to utilize that grant.
All right, so we have a motion to approve, it has been seconded, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then Superintendent Peters, again, with facility and program updates, I believe she put a copy of those on everyone's desk.
Yep. So typically when I'm, when I need to be here for something else, I try to do a quick update, so it's usually January I do one, so this is the time. I put another copy on your desk because when I got back to work this afternoon, I, I found a couple more things I wanted to make sure I talk about. Current happenings, Goddick Adult Center, all of the information is online. This is a very quick piece of what's happening and some highlights. I was able to help with the holiday lunch, which was on Wednesday, December 13th, over 80 participants. The Goddick Center has lunches every week, but this is their holiday celebration. Trio comes, they partnered with Trio, it was a great time, not many, they do a big steak dinner, typically we get some sent back, but this time it was perfect, so it was, it was a really good time to see people. And some, what I really thought was cool at Goddick is they're doing a new technology for tomorrow workshops. These are, there is no cost to these, and you can go online to register, you can go to Goddick and register, and those start January 12th, so there's one every month for the next five months. And they're on Fridays, that's the only time that Goddick had available for a time slot, and so they're at 2:30 to 3:30. And those are for any ages. People tend to think that Goddick Adult Center is for 65 and older, it's not. It's really for anyone, and that's why it's called the Adult Center. Rutland Youth Theater, I hope that some of you were able to go to the Willy Wonka Junior show that was at the Paramount, it was a great time. I was able to go opening night, Friday night, I couldn't believe there were no mistakes. And it was almost sold out Friday night, but it was sold out Saturday for both shows. Special thanks to our, our volunteers, lots of parent volunteers, but specifically our director, stage manager, stage managers, fundraising crew, Haley Lassen, Missy Neipes, Brandy Barclay, Kayla Kalinsky, Josh Bowen, Mark Semenetti, Jackie Walker, Katrina LaFima, Rebecca Brostek, Catherine Grossarth, Katie Carey, and Erica Sweet. Right now, we're doing registrations for February Theater Camp, they tend to fill up very quickly, so if you're interested, I know I'm talking to PAG TV, that's why I'm going through some of this, a little bit more than I do. Lastly, over the weekend, we celebrated the life of Barb Lassen. Barb Lassen began with the Recreation Department Theater Program as a volunteer parent behind the scenes over 15 years ago. Later became stage manager, and more recently was our creative director of Rutland Youth Theater for the last three years. She will be sadly missed, she was a friend of mine, her daughter works for the REC as well, as a summer camp director, and more recently Haley took over the director role. She's a senior in college and has done very, very well. We will miss, we will really, really miss Barb and her passion, her kindness, her laughter, and we got to celebrate her life yesterday, and I really wanted to, to talk about that today. Okay, so moving on to Giorgietti Ice Arena, we had Skate with Santa this past weekend, over 350 participants, if you're on Facebook, and I believe she put on the website, there's really cool pictures. We just ended our first session of skating lessons, and our second session begins January 6th. Something really special about that too, I, there's a young girl, you know, we take up to like ages three in these skating lessons, and then to watch them go out and skate on the ice is, is really fun, and I saw some really good Facebook posts from just parents who took their kids to open skate, and they just couldn't believe the progress that they had. So it's, it's really cool that we're able to offer that. Ice Arena has done really well and is on target to, to meet all the goals that, that we put out, revenue-wise and opportunity-wise. The REC programs, K through two basketball, we had 42 kids participating, we just ended at this weekend. Our basketball league started up, so we'll have games over the weekends. Wrestling, we are opening registration now, we'll be working with the high school as we've done in the past to, to build that program. Another really good experience that happened is we now have a middle school, high school wrestling team. Kind of went off the books for about four years during COVID, and we had feeder kids, three middle school kids that started as K through two with us, and we were really worried that there wasn't going to be a place for them in middle school at Rutland. And Mike Norman and I have been working really hard to get coaches, and we now have 20 kids participating in wrestling at the middle school level and a little bit into the high school. So we're really excited about that. And we still are doing our adult pickup on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings, and our rentals and memberships are staying steady. Miscellaneous items, just really quick, just because this is a very popular class, the babysitting course that I, I do for American Red Cross, I'm really, I'm the only certified instructor right now in the Rutland area. The hospital used to do it about five to 10 years ago, but it's, it hasn't been around. So I typically do two classes in February, and those fill up, and if they fill up, I'll offer a third one during February break. We also partner with Rutland County Parent-Child Center to collect holiday gifts. We were able to get rid of all of our tickets, all the gifts have come in, and we've delivered those to the Parent-Child Center. This past weekend, as I mentioned, we had the Santa, Skate with Santa, but we also had a winter carnival where we partnered with Peak Gymnastics, and they put on a big carnival at the REC Center with bouncy houses and crafts. Other things I just want to mention is Winterfest, that's starting to, it's going to be here before we know it, so you're starting to see events starting to trickle out. A lot of those events do happen at the REC facilities, and I'll have a brochure as soon as I, as soon as we get all of those finalized. There is a new community choir, they're called Nothing But Treble. Really cute. I have some flyers I'm going to put out there, and it is, they meet at the Corcel Building, so that's another rental that comes in, but I, I told her I would put it on PAG TV too because she is trying to build this. Castleton has one, and they actually performed at the, at the holiday lunch, so it's a great way for other people, you know, to get involved. So if you're interested in that, I'll have flyers out there. And then lastly, many thanks to Casella for the monetary donation for the addition of the police car to the Justin Thomas Park that is currently displayed at the police station, correct? And we have the other display. All right, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Alderwoman McClure?
I just had a question on the marketing for the new technology workshop.
Yep.
I think those are amazing.
Yep.
I see number, the one here, the first one I think is probably the most important, is the how to protect yourself from scams.
Yep.
On the 19th. I think all of this is very, very valuable, but for that specific workshop, has the REC considered working with some of our sponsors and partners through Community Health?
So this is an actual, this is an actual organization that puts this on.
Okay.
So they are the ones that provide it. So I don't know, this is the first time we've done it. And April and Emily, who run that facility, will have more information. It's called, I thought I put it on here, but I may not have.
Technology for Tomorrow.
Yeah, and it's T with the number four and then T again. But the information's on the website. There's a lot more detail on the website.
Perfect. If I may, just a follow-up question. Is there any intent from the REC Center to market this in the Rutland Herald for the mature Vermont or community that may not necessarily look online for?
Yeah, so April does put, actually pretty much in the Rutland Herald along with the link. Unfortunately, cost, it's a financial piece that we don't typically have for advertisement. But she does put a blurb. I know I saw it in the Lakeside News actually over the weekend, which is typically free. So cheaper. So, yeah.
Any questions for Superintendent Peters from other members of the board?
Just a comment, understanding smartphone. Boy, that's something I need to learn.
So we can't schedule any meetings on the March 15th, so you can go.
Moving on, we have Chief Kilcullen with a request to approve a halftime leave of absence for a police department employee. There's a memo and supporting documentation on pages 12 to 15 of your packet. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. So you may remember back in May, came to the board requesting a halftime leave of absence for one of our community resource specialists, Julie Fitzgibbons, who's here tonight, so she could finish her, complete an internship with Rutland Mental Health and Clinical Mental Health Counseling. And because of the events that occurred over the summer, there were some setbacks in getting that done. And so that was suspended. It was resumed and, but Julie still requires some clinical time to attain her degree. And so this request is to extend that until graduation in May, May 11th of 2024. It would begin January 1st, requested for it to begin January 1st and end upon graduation May 11th, 2024. The contact, contract provides for a six-month leave subject to approval of the board in any given calendar year. So in 2023, that's six months. Again, started in May, suspended, restarted, but we use six months in May. And so the request again is for about four and a half months for Julie to finish. And I think one of the attachments was the agreement we ultimately entered into with Julie to, where Julie commits to working with the department, pretty much month for month, for every month of leave. So in the current agreement, it was six months. So we'd look to modify that agreement to extend her commitment to us upon completion of her degree.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion to suspend the rules has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I'll move to approve the leave of absence from January 1st through May 11th of 2024.
Second. So we have a motion to approve the leave of absence. It's been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Treasurer Markowski. First with a treasurer's report for the city and RRA as of November 30th. This was emailed to board members. Welcome.
Thanks. Hi, I'll be brief tonight. We're already running late. So keeping in mind, this is just November. We're five months in. We're going to spend, I want to spend a bit more time with the board when we get to the halfway mark. This is the first time that many of you went through a budget process. Tax rate last year, I felt, you need more information. You really need more information on how the financials and how things tie together. So I'd like to spend a bit more time, usually with the quarterlies, we send it to finance committee. So I'll just give some highlights tonight when I went over the financials. If you reviewed the bank account balances, you'd notice that we had some pretty high balances. We still had to do that transfer to the school. So as of November 30th, we were holding $3.5 million that we transferred the next week to the school. On the delinquent report, it doesn't seem like much, but our delinquencies are under a million and we're, in November, that's a good thing, believe it or not. We're lower than we have been in other years. We have several properties going to tax sale, so you'll see those in the paper in January likely. So when you see something go to tax sale, it doesn't mean we just came up with that idea. We've been trying to reach with these people for so long. So just keep that in mind when you see those. We're working with two local attorneys on that and we actually had three properties pay in full to avoid tax sales. And Linda has been working down the list to try to get some of those lower balances so we're not looking at tax sale next year. So that, I'm not going to go into detail, water, sewer, parking, transit. We know their problems. We already know that. So let's sit down in, after that six-month mark and really look where we're at in that parking. The transit center, Alderman Barber Gallo was looking closely at that and I hadn't billed the loss to the state. So that was another $50,000 that came in there for year end. So that will improve that fund once it's paid. So we have that going. When you look at non-tax revenues, you can see interest earnings and fire department just already above budget. I told you I didn't do a really good job on that interest earnings, but that's okay because that's extra money at the end of the year. Really, the total general fund is about 46%. Little bit higher than target you'd want after five months, but nothing concerning right now. And I wanted to end with the RRA. I don't spend a lot of time on that. So as of the end of November, the RRA had $51,000 in unassigned fund balance. We, we had some surplus last year. So at our last meeting, we assigned those balances. So right now, at the end of November, we have $8,000 for that Vtrans grant, $19,000 for business development, $26,000 for administrative reserve, and $5,000 for the strategic plan that the RRA was doing. So I wanted to mention that. And then also bring up something that we've talked about before, but remember we had a police lease. We had trouble getting the vehicles. So we started with a Chevy Equinox and then they went away. Somebody said, okay, we can get a Trailblazer and then they went away. So guess what? We ended up with Chevy Equinox, year new, 2024, right? Or 23 maybe, 23. So all of that waiting, we ended up with a better deal than we had started with this. So I wanted to close the loop on that. We're finally, we just, I think dispersed the funds this week for that lease. And another thing, I'll be sitting down with Chief Lovett when he gets back because we'll be looking to lease that ladder, the vehicle that he has in Florida, the rebuild.
The rebuilt one?
Yeah, the rebuild. So that'll be coming up through too. So.
Very good. Any questions from the board for the treasurer? Seeing none, I think you have another agenda item, a request to go out to bid for city audit services. And there was a memo emailed to board members.
Okay, any questions on that? We usually bid the audit for three years. So I work, I reach out to other towns, find out, you know, who they're using and I try to send to eight to 10, as many as I can for the city. And then we'll get together either in finance committee or I'll bring it back. But I'd like to award that early February if we could.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules and it has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move with the approval of going out to bid for the annual audit.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the treasurer to obtain RFP for audit services. It has been seconded. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, treasurer.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of standing committees. First, we have Alderwoman Savage with a report from the Charter and Ordinance Committee Meeting of November 21st. This was placed on your desk.
Members present were myself, Alderman Cooperley, Alderman Hooker, Alderman Tadio, Alderman McCann. Others present were Mayor Dungus, President Talbot, Alderman Davis, Alderman McClure, Alderman Adams, Alderman Barber Gallo, Attorney LaChance, Clerk Kapusta, the City Assistant Langueis, Chief Kilcullen, Chief Lovett, the Planning and Zoning Administrator Starinski, the RRA Executive Director Bove, Gordon Drizzello, and members of the public. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The topics of the evening to discuss were the ordinance covering hotels, motels, and inns and language for business registrations and short-term rentals. Chair Savas asked Mayor Dungus to lead the discussion on the proposed changes to Title 11, Chapter 11 Hotels, Motels, and Inns. Citing the state's Act 47 Vermont Homes Act, the mayor stated that any new language could not prohibit or penalize a hotel from renting rooms for housing assistance through the state's general assistance program or to any person whose room is rented with public funds. He also stated that a baseline of 20-25% of the 238 rooms participating in the state's general assistance program should remain exempt from any fee structure proposed. Administrator Starinski showed charts explaining the added cost to the city's emergency services, losses in rooms and meals taxes, and explained the strange, the strain on the city's infrastructure with the hotel rooms functioning long-term as multifamily units. Mayor Dungus recommended a fee structure between 400 and 500 per room per month beyond the baseline of the 20-25% of rooms that participate in the general assistance program. Administrator Starinski and Attorney LaChance will work on sample language and bring it back to a meeting at a future date for approval and recommendation to the whole board and this issue remains in committee and no action is needed. This report is for informational purposes only. The business registration was the next topic. Administrator Starinski said that the city should define and align with the state's, state of Vermont's business registrations. And Clerk Kapusta was very supportive of registering all businesses and $100 registration fee. It was decided that sample language would be helpful for looking at this further. Administrator Starinski will look at sample language and bring it back to a meeting at a future date for approval and recommendation to the whole board and this issue remains in committee and no action is needed. This report is for informational purposes only. The committee next looked at short-term, the short-term rental issue. Administrator Skrinski brought up that it would be helpful for units participating in the short-term rentals, including tourist and housing and tourist rooms registered with the city as businesses. Members of the public stated concerns about owner occupant rentals and the lack of clarity of definition of short-term rentals and the rules surrounding them on the city's website. Administrator Starinski stated that it would be good to clean up and centralize the language around rentals and make it more user-friendly. Administrator Starinski and Attorney LaChance will work on sample language and bring it back to a meeting at a future date for approval and recommendation to the whole board. This issue remains in committee and no action is needed. This report is for informational purposes only and the meeting adjourned at 6:47 PM.
Thank you, Alderwoman Savage. Next, we have Alderwoman Tadio with a report from the Community and Economic Development Committee Meeting of December 12th. There's a copy of the report on page 16 of your packet.
The committee met Tuesday, December 12th. Members present were myself, Alderman Hooker, Alderman McCann, Alderman McClure over the phone. Others present were Mayor Dungus, RRA Executive Director Ed Bove, President Talbot, Treasurer Markowski, and Alderman Barber Gallo. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the Vtrans grant the city received for the Rutland Station Area Pedestrian Improvement Project. The original plan was to create a new design for the gateway to Rutland by the train station. The plan was estimated to cost $374,000. Rutland generated $74,830 in matching funds for the Vtrans grant from a variety of sources, including ARPA funds, the mayor's contingency plan, ZOMIAS funds, the DRP, and the RRA. After Rutland received the Vtrans grant, the project went out to bid multiple times and Rutland did not receive quality responses. In the final bid process, there was only one contractor who submitted a bid. Per the terms of the Vtrans grant, the city is required to use a Vtrans contractor. The bid from this contractor would put the project $50,000 over budget. While the city could apply for another grant from Vtrans, there will be a match required from the city. The RRA's goal is to not cost the city any more money, but to still improve the area by the train station. Ed Bove proposed that the city could potentially return the Vtrans grant money and take the remaining $74,830 and use it for a less costly landscaping project we could call the Rail Gateway Project. The money could be used to repair the fence by the train and for a landscaping design concept drawing, identifying where to plant trees. The project could use trees from the urban forestry grant to complete landscaping by the entrance to the railroad and DPW could plant the trees. Before moving forward with the project, Treasurer Markowski stated that the Board of Aldermen need to reallocate the funds that were intended to be used as grant matching funds. A motion was made to reallocate $35,000 from ARPA funds toward the Rail Gateway Project. This motion passed four to zero and I so move.
Second. All right, so we have a motion. It has been seconded. Any discussion from members of the board? Alderman McCann?
Yeah, I'll just make a note that it, I think I made this comment at the meeting. It seems like we're giving up a little bit of the leverage that we intended with some of these funds by not necessarily taking advantage of the grant that we initially matched. But we've gotten to a point where we're not really going to be able to use those funds anyway. So we're identifying a way to take, you know, use the funds that we've kind of carved out and put them to the best use I think we can for meeting the initial intent of what we originally went out for.
Alderwoman Hooker?
I'd just like to point out that at that meeting, it seemed that the design for the project was pretty much half of what we were going to be getting and it just seemed like too much to ask. And I think that you're right to, that we're looking at the right path to use the money that we've allocated and do it in-house, as it were, or in the city.
Seeing no additional discussion or debate, the motion was made to reallocate $35,000 previously from the ARPA funds towards this Rail Gateway Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
A motion was made to reallocate $7,500 from the ZOMIAS funds toward the Rail Gateway Project. This motion passed four to zero and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion or debate on the motion? Alderman Gillum?
Just a comment, some of this money's going to fix the fence because that seems to be the worst situation we have down there right now. So, yeah.
Alderwoman Tadio?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So of this $74,000, the idea is that some of that money would go to repair the fence, possibly replace the entire fence, and then get basically a concept of a landscape design project, which then we would combine forces, use money from this other grant to get the trees and DPW could plant the trees. But we need somebody to create that plan because it would involve changing some of the parking, et cetera, in that area.
All right, so we have a motion. It's been seconded to reallocate the $7,500 previously from the ZOMIAS fund towards the Rail Gateway Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
A motion was made to authorize the Rutland Redevelopment Authority to obtain confirmation letters about the remaining funds and to authorize the RRA to use those funds for the Rail Gateway Project. This motion passed four to zero and I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
This topic will remain in committee and the meeting adjourned at 6:26 PM.
Thank you very much. Next, we have reports of representatives. We have Alderman McCann with a report from the Traffic Committee.
Thanks. The Traffic Committee met on December 15th. Three of the primary items discussed were concerns brought to me from members of the public. These included, the first being a concern related to the need for a crosswalk on North Main Street somewhere near the Highlander Motel. The city engineer noted that this need had been raised previously and the consensus at this point was to wait until after the state completes its paving project next summer to identify how the inclusion of a new crosswalk may impact future traffic patterns. The second concern was related to on-street parking on Curtis Ave. This was noted as being something brought to the committee previously as well and the police chief is working with the zoning administrator to try to find a solution. Third was a concern related to the lack of crosswalk signalization at times of night and early morning when our stoplights are flashing. This becomes an issue at shoulder times when traffic volumes are a little higher, but the lights are still not cycling from green to red. There was agreement that this is something that we should address. It was noted that our current signal controllers should have the ability to cycle all lights to a solid red to allow for a crosswalk cycle before going back to flashing signals for vehicular traffic. The mayor and the city engineer agreed to look into it further. Again, this is for information only.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Alderman McCann? Seeing none, we'll move on. Reports of select committees, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. Board of Cannabis Commissioners, we have nothing on the agenda. That brings us to unfinished business. Seeing none, we'll move on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Gillum?
I'd like to refer to the Parking Committee. I experienced a parking situation after the VSO concert. There would seem to be 150 people waiting to get through the hallway to the parking garage because a lot of people did not read the rules of how to get back in there. It's not on the ticket and it's not on the kiosk that you need to take your ticket with you to get back into that hallway. And nobody knew that. So I'd like to refer to committee that we, next time you talk to the parking folks over there, that they need to put a sign on the kiosk when they take their ticket out, that they need to take it with them because they can't get back in because the barcode system, whatever it is, or the queue code, you gotta have the ticket to do it. Thank God somebody had one further back in the line and then everybody got into the garage again. But I think there's a lack of communication. It needs to be on the ticket and it needs to be on the kiosk when you purchase a ticket. It needs to be on the ticket, and it needs to be on the kiosk when you purchase a ticket.
Mayor Dungus, perhaps you can help us address this more expeditiously than sending it to committee?
Sure, absolutely. So Alderman Gillum's point was actually brought up via email from Eric, who runs the Paramount. He contacted us last week after the VSO incident with those concerns from his patrons, and I don't know if it came directly from you, but from others as well. We immediately contacted Laz. We did find out that it was the lack of knowledge, not the lack, the system wasn't broken, but it was.
The system was great.
So we're working with Laz to find ways to solve that now for the long term. Actually, we're working with Laz and the Paramount, because we do understand the criticality of that parking deck to the Paramount's business. So we're working together already. I would suggest holding off putting it in committee just for now, because we're already in the process, but might easily, we'll get you an answer one way or the other.
I'll withdraw that motion.
Very good.
And I just want to make one more comment. The good part of all this, going out, you really took those credit cards real quick and really moved the line going out, so the system is working so far.
Excellent. Great. Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Any additional miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business? Alderman McCann?
Yeah, during our budget discussions last week, there was a bit of back and forth related to the recreation budget and the sort of proportion of costs that are passed on to Rutland City residents versus non-Rutland City residents. So I'd like to refer to, I think, the Recreation Committee and discussion on the comparison of those rates for city residents versus non for the REC programs.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to refer to the REC Committee, a discussion of rates for recreational programs for city residents versus non-city residents. Any discussion or debate on the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any additional new business, miscellaneous motions, resolutions? Seeing none, I will look to Attorney LaChance to give us the motion language for executive session.
I have to throw a piece of paper out, sorry. Yes, at this time, I'd like to propose a motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And then I'd like to propose a second motion to enter into executive session with inclusion of the mayor, treasurer, city attorney, clerk, and, yes, sorry, I wasn't sure Chief was still there, and the PD chief, to discuss a negotiation of a contract is allowed under Title 1, Section 313A 1A. And did I miss anybody from that inclusion? Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to go into executive session. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.